Okay.
Great.
And just advance like this? Okay. So as I mentioned before, this is the second part of the comprehensive water code revision. And the purposes of which we're, why, the reason why we're approaching it are, just as I described to you a moment ago. Okay, that was really slow. No, no, I'm sorry, that's right. I forgot what I said myself, that I'm, we're skipping the preliminaries, the descriptive material. So we're moving straight into Article Four substantive changes. Article Four is the one that deals with backflow devices. And I wasn't here when you've taken previous action. I understand that has been a matter of substantial interest as to whether or not, at least for lawn sprinkler systems, you have a every year or a biannual report filing requirement. As the changes that I have listed here, we look at the very first section, 16.4.1, and then followed 16.4.3, both of them. They bring in for the first time the community development director's role to do initial residential plumbing inspections and to identify code enforcement issues. It's important to note here that the community development director does not do commercial installations. That's done by NABCD through Cedric County. And this is not a functional test. It is, it is an observation. Do they have the backflow device or not? The staff does not go out there to actually test the backflow device to see if it works. The presumption is the plumber who installed it did that. And so if there's a problem, it'll, it'll have to wait for the first test for it, for it to be caught. But since the testers and the installers can in fact be the same people, the likelihood it is, of course, tested at the very beginning is, is really high. And although it's not mentioned here, this is a good enough place to address it as any. The community development director and city engineer, both mentioned here on this slide, don't actually go out and do the things that are assigned for them here in the code. They send other staff members or they send a contractor, the designees, and the mayor's pointed that out in his review. So it's purely a stylistic issue that you have here. These positions are by nature administrative department heads. They send people out to do jobs. They manage the jobs that are being done. I don't think we need to say city engineer or designee, community development director or designee. But if you're more comfortable with that, we can do that. There's no prohibition, there's no requirement. It's simply a stylistic issue for you to decide how you want your code to read. And so, I don't know, does anybody have any strong feelings about that either way?
I, I had a similar, I had a question that I didn't get around to asking was, I know, you know, Keith was in this position and then Paula, they have different skills. I wondered that too, like, it sometimes, we'll contract it out if it's something that wouldn't be within that specific employee's ability, is that right?
A hundred percent. It's, it's, Paula and Keith have different skills, but they have the same managerial competence to know what they don't know and to get someone that knows what they know to do that job.
Well, if there's no feeling, strong feeling from the council, so we don't get ahead of the rules that say no, actual decisions are made in workshop, why don't we let city manager decide? So we'll go on to, at 16.4.1, we have clear definitions for potable water and plumbing system. And these were, these are technical decisions that, and technical descriptions that were developed by bringing into the staff meeting to people in the field who are responsible for making these kinds of assessments. So I feel comfortable that those, the definitions that we presented you with are better than the ones that existed previously. 16.4.4, administrative search powers listed in Article Four are made consistent with the powers that exist in Article Two and, and as described in Article Six. The, at 16.4.5, the city engineer granted authority to approve unusual connections. Those are backflow connections that are not particularly routine, but, but require installation and inspection, things like commercial dishwashing units, something that don't even come up once a year publicly and don't therefore deserve special treatment in the code. This is suggesting for the city engineer to use her expertise to be able to, to determine whether or not those have been appropriately installed. 16.4, 16.4.5. A couple, in a couple of instances, staff wanted to anticipate potential changes in the plumbing code. And I have experience with the plumbing code, the building code, and several others, and they do change probably every three years, I think just because they get new committee members nationally and who decide they have, they need to take some action. So they want to make sure that the city's code is up to date, is current, by saying, here's a standard. And then, when that becomes more stringent, if it does, by code inaction, that more stringent rule will apply. But it doesn't work the other way. If for some reason codes become less stringent, the more strict Bel Air rules will still apply. 16.4.6, the account holder identified as the person responsible for maintaining and reporting on all backflow devices. It simply was unclear before. It's stated in the passive voice and, and we want to make sure that responsibility is, is described. 16.4.6, except, the exception to the requirement for annual inspections is removed. In the, in the staff group, it was described that having them every other year creates some administrative burdens that don't exist if all backflow devices go through testing and reporting every year. But, want to be clear, this is the council's choice. I inquired of KDHE and about the current standard that Bel Air has every two years for lawn, lawn installations, irrigation installations. And they cited me a, an administrative authority that they use for their, for their agreement. And I pointed out to them that that was specific only to nursing home facilities and not generally to, to the, all installations everywhere. And they said, um, we're going to have a governing body that's going to be interested in what the basis is for going to every, every year instead of every two years, as they have it now. And I had, my response I got was crickets. There just was no response, which is not definitive, but because there was immediate engagement at the first question and no answer at the second question, I take that to mean there is no positive answer that KDHE can provide. I went, I took the additional step to research other jurisdictions and across the country, not just in Kansas. And lawn sprinkler irrigations, lawn irrigation systems as a backflow risk are considered very low. And it's not uncommon at all to see two and sometimes even three years for, for requirement for inspections. So legally, I think you are on acceptable ground to stay as you have it. As, I would urge you to consider, find out from staff why this had been a problem before you make your decision. That decision actually will come when I incorporate all the changes from the first session and from this session, and then bring the, the code to you as a uniform package. And at that point, you can say, we'd like it all except this or that, make this change, make that change, and pass as modified.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would just say, this one doesn't fit your charter on the front page. To clarify, this one's actually a more burdensome change. So we're, we're adding something that hadn't been in there before, so it's, it's not really the way you described these changes. So anyway, I'm obviously against it, but.
I'm not sure I said that everything that was proposed here would be less of a burden.
No, you said there were administrative changes, clarifications. This isn't a clarification, this is a flat-out change.
Yeah. Yes, sir, and that's why I'm pointing it out.
And, and I can talk a little bit about that. With Jay's explanation and work he's done with KDHE, I, I think the staff's always going to say, let's do, do, let's go this way, let's go this way. But with Jay's clarification with KDHE, I, I don't think we have any issue maintaining what we've always done. I, I'm sorry, there's been a little bit of a back and forth between everyone in this room when we're developing this type of thing. So I, we can talk a lot about it, but I don't think we're that opposed to just keeping everything the same and reverting when we get to the final water code, so.
I want to keep it every two years, and I'd like to see it longer than that. I saw Texas had some five years and.
So we've worked pretty hard to get this to two years because we were being told that it was, it had to be the annual and, and as I did some research, I went to other states as, as you did, and, and found that they were doing things completely a lot less stringent than, than every year. And was finding even other cities in, in Kansas that were doing biannual certification. So I think keeping it biannual makes a lot of sense and it's, it is, well, it's might be a little bit administratively burdensome, more than every year. If you did a three-year or five-year, that might get, be a really confusing.
And, and the best part about this whole, this whole thing, and I know Deb's back there, that we battled such a fight without our new system, trying to track all these things. Now we, now we have a new electronic system that we can much better do, a much better job in this area.
So we, we can have a discussion with staff if you'd like, but I think the consensus here is we need to move it, move it to the biannual requirement.
With the consensus here and direction from city manager, when it comes back to you, it will not have this change in it. It'll be as, as it currently exists.
Thank you.
Good. 16.4.6, striking the filing fee for the annual report. Staff's opinion is it costs more in, in labor costs than what the fee collects. And so both the city and citizens are better off if you just.
Was it five bucks?
Yeah. And the thing we see there is the sprinkler companies, they'll get 25 of them and then just give them to the city and it's done with. So if they have to sit there and pay, it's burdensome. I, I understand the idea, but it's easier just to take a stack and enter them all and go, so.
We just need to strike the word annual from that line.
And if you want to talk about administrate, like, what you want the citizens to like, all the sprinkler companies, no, Bel Air charged a $5 fee, so they charged them an extra $5. It's a hundred percent pass-through and then I got more complaints on the $5 fee than actually doing it from citizens last year.
About right, Deb.
16.4.7, this section takes notice that without including something in the code for it, there's no sanction for not filing a fee. And filing the inspection, having inspection, I'm sorry, that's misspoken, there's no sanction for not filing the report. The, it's important to have the inspection done and have the report filed to maintain the integrity of the city's water supply. And so that needs to be enforced somehow. So what this section of the code does is tie it back to the general enforcement powers that are, that exist under chap, under Article Six that we're going to get to. Article Five substantive changes. This article incorporates the city's powers under water emergency situations and in particular under the municipal water plan. The changes that are made to this section incorporate your 2025 version of the municipal water plan. And the, there, there's the introductory section, 16.5.1 recognizes the city's contractual obligation under its wholesale water agreements. And I also note that was noted, and it was a part of the prelude for this council's passage of the chapter seven just last week. 16.5.3 describes water wa, water watch level of scrutiny, which Bel Air only has. That's not something that Wichita requires, and it doesn't require any action on the part of the citizens. It triggers voluntary compliance with certain kinds of water use restrictions. But it's mostly information passing from the city to the citizens saying, if we don't do something different, we will have restrictions that we'll have to impose. 16.5.4 is the water warning level, same first level as in the municipal water plan. 16.5.5 is water emergency, it's the higher level in the municipal water plan. 16.5.6 repeats the obligation of the city under, under its water contracts for wholesale water provision. 16.5.11, and says, includes the due process procedures in chapter six, making this all uniform throughout all articles. 16.5.12 sets the fees based on the master fee schedule. And I see now, probably want to make the changes in, we're going to get to seven. Seven had, Article Seven has specific fees set out in it. And I think I heard in the last session, your desire is to take out the specific fees out of the ordinance and simply put in the reference to the master fee schedule. So that's a change that we'll get to also. Article Six substantive changes. This is the enforcement section. The enforcing off, creates the position of the enforcing officer, and that can be the community development director or the city engineer or any of their designees or even the police chief or one of his designees. Any of them can function as an enforcement officer to get compliance with the water code and the insidious provisions. 16.6.4, there is an option to pursue violations of the code through a prosecution in municipal court, but that's a, that's a pretty serious step and one that the, this, this code provision doesn't exist now, but it would add the provision that that could only be taken under the approval of the city attorney. Right now, it allows prosecution in municipal court without any such supervision. This puts a level of judgment over that action that I think is appropriate. It also sets a standard of what can be prosecuted in municipal court, and that, that's only intentional violations. You're not going to have somebody who negligently is violating the water code or, or maybe even knowingly violates the water code, but they, but they know the requirements, they understand the reason why they're there, and they intend to do it. This is for people who say, I don't care how much you fine me, my landscaping will cost more to put back in than paying every fine that you levy on me. There has to be something available to, to address that kind of recalcitrant behavior. 16.6.5 gives the detailed notice provisions needed for due process, and they are applied across all articles of, of the code. 16.6.6 sets up the administrative hearing, the request, the procedure, and, and ultimately whether or not, how that is appealable beyond action taken by the hearing officer, whether that's the city manager or someone that he designates as a hearing officer. 16.6.6 says intentional violations are declared misdemeanor with penalties up to $2,500, but that's, and that's the same level that all your misdemeanors are at in city court. And reiterate, that's subject to approval by the city attorney. I know that's redundant, but it, it seemed appropriate because that's, that sanction is so severe. 16.6.9, the city has the ability to abate violations that impact public health, safety and welfare. If, if there is a, a water, water code violation, for example, a serious leak that somebody has, and because of, it's leaking off of their property and because of their location it's causing a traffic hazard in the road, in the street or the road in front of them, the city would have the power just to go in and take action to abate that kind of a nuisance. 16.6.10 authorizes third-party contractors to be used for that primarily because of their immediate availability and their expertise in availability of, of equipment instantly. 16.6.11 is one that I've added in here to make clear that when the city makes regulatory inspections, we're not inspecting for functional, for the function of the equipment or the function of the backflow devices or function of the plumbing system. That's what your plumbers for. We're there to see that the, the household infrastructure, if you will, the equipment is in place. And the, and this code does not give individuals an avenue to come back against the city and say, I had this leak, it destroyed all the furniture in my house and I'm having to tear my walls down to the studs, and city, you came in and inspected and said, this is okay. This says not the case. Article Seven. The changes that are made here, and, and they look pretty extensive, especially when we start with two whole sections stricken in the document that I provided to you. But the Article Seven that you passed on Tuesday, pretty much parrots language from the code of the city of Wichita. Therefore, does not use the definitions of account holder instead of customer or service location instead of customers premises. It made all those changes to make it match up with the code language that we have in all of the other articles. So 16.7.1 takes out the unnecessary definitions. 16.7.2 through five replaces those definitions with the ones, with the language that we already have in the water code in the other sections. And 6.16.7.5 takes out the restatement of, the restatement at length of the due process notice and hearing requirements and simply says, refer back to Article Six where we've got this all stated. And then not on that slide, what I just mentioned a couple of minutes ago is, I'll go back in and take out the reference to specific levels of fines and put that and tie it back to your master fee schedule. So those are the changes on four through seven that are proposed. Happy to receive any comments that you have.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, we were moving so quickly with the last meeting, trying to become in compliance with the ordinance for the city of Wichita. So now the, the benefit is it's absolutely consistent and brought in tied together with all of the other water code revisions, but I just wanted to mention that.
Just for my own clarification on this notice of violation, I think it comes from When you get to that level of notice, you're, you're giving a notice of violation to both the resident, the occupant of the property and it's the property owner. Is that a correct statement? Because they couldn't, they can be different part, different people.
They can be.
Especially for rental property.
Yes, Mayor, that particular provision, it only appears in that section. And it's there precisely to cover the situation where you have a landlord and a tenant, and the tenant is in violation. The landlord may want to step in, take remedial action to maintain the connection at the residence because there are, if, if you don't, there are reconnection fees and other kinds of administrative hassles. And if they want, if the landlord gets notice and is willing to step in to remedy that situation, all to the good because the, the city gets compliance once again.
But it's only at that point that you come to this point that you may be disconnecting and now you're ready to.
Yes, sir.
Take action.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification, to make sure we're on the same page. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns?
Mayor Benaj, I'd just like to thank Jay for all his work on this. This, it's a big deal. It's the reason why we haven't updated it in years and years and years is because we haven't had this type of mind on it. So I just appreciate it and I know the staff downstairs is really going to appreciate a clear understanding once we get this through the finish line because a lot of years it's gray area and that's really tough for staff to, to work with.
I want to thank you for the extra research on how often backflow preventers needed to be checked to, that it wasn't just.
It's probably not my idea. I think the city attorney told me this is going to be an issue of contention and it should be a preference.
But you still didn't work.
Yeah. You didn't work, that's good.
Humble too.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions or discussion, I thank you for the, all the work and look forward to the final draft and, and hopefully we can get this adopted. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any? Is there any more to the water code presentation or is this, this is it? I figured it was, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't getting you off. Okay, all right. So other issues for discussion this evening?
Just wanted to tell the council, we'll, we'll have a very light agenda next Tuesday. I have maybe two agenda items, which is maybe three. So just to let you know that if you see the packet, you say, that's it? That's all I got, so.
Can we start at eight o'clock then instead of seven?
Get it done early. That's right.
No, start at eight. Get done at nine. All right. If there are no other issues to discuss, we'll call it an evening and thank everybody for taking time to, had your evening to come visit about water code.
All right. Thank you.
See everybody next week.